Good afternoon, welcome to Kent City Council Committee of the Hall for Tuesday, June 17, 2025. We'll go ahead and get started with a roll call. Melissa.
Council President, Council President Cor.
Here.
Councilmember Boyce.
Want to have Brenda Fincher here?
Councilmember Boyd.
Here.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour. Councilmember Michelle.
Here.
And Councilmember Trauner.
Yep.
Thank you, Melissa. Next up, we have agenda approval. Any changes to the agenda? If not, we have a motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. Alright, approval of minutes. Have a motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Alright, payment of bills.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Alright, next up, we have our information only item. First quarter 2025 investment report, and we have Joe here. Welcome. It's always exciting to hear from you.
Thank you. I'm Joe Bartlamay in the Finance Department, and today I'll be presenting the first quarter 2025 investment report. And this report was presented to the Investment Advisory Board on May 22. So at the end of the first quarter 2025, we had cash in the bank yielding a 4.5% earnings credit that helps offset our US bank fees, balance of $4.9 million in that cash. In our short-term portfolio with this Washington State Local Government Investment Pool, with a yield of 4.4%, overnight maturity, and a balance of $119.4 million. And our long-term portfolio with an average yield of 3.38%, 879-day average maturity, market value of $258.2 million, and an investment total of $259.2 million. And then the pie chart below shows the significant portions of the portfolio are in that short-term portfolio, the LGIP in the red, and the US Treasuries is the most significant portion in the green, nearly half of the portfolio. This we have our five-quarter flow of cash and investments by type. Cash at the bottom, we're still keeping just the, really the bare minimum of cash in the bank to cover our short-term expenses and cover our US bank fees with the earnings credit. The purple line is the Washington State Local Government Investment Pool. That's our liquid portfolio. We can transfer funds to and from that account daily to earn an overnight interest rate. Above that, we have our long-term portfolio, our managed portfolio with maturities up to five years. We've incrementally increased that long-term portfolio through 2024, and then we've paused the incremental increase for 2025. In 2024, we spent down a portion of our fund balance on those large items like the administrative services building and the Keyhawk project, as well as spending down some of the ARPA funds. So that's why the LGIP is a little bit lower between the spending down and the increasing the long-term portfolio to take advantage of the higher yields that are currently available. And then overall, the total cash and investment portfolio really ended 2024 about where it started and is sort of on the same trend for now. And then the three-year flow of total cash and investments, again, this shows that the blue line at the bottom is 2023, it was an increase year over year, 2024, and the green really started and ended the year about where it started, even with those large expenditures in mind. 2025 in the red in the first quarter there is really trending right along with 2024 for the first quarter. Interest earnings over five quarters, slight decrease in the most recent quarter. Rates are down just slightly in the local government investment pool, and the balance is slightly lower, and that's why they have slightly lower earnings. Next, we have the total cash and investment portfolio by funds. So of that total portfolio of $383.5 million, this shows the portion that's allocated to the various funds throughout the city. Again, significant portions in the general fund, the various capital and street funds and utility funds, as well as the insurance funds. Next, we have our long-term portfolio only. This does not include cash and the local government investment pool. Again, the pie chart shows the most significant portions of the portfolio in US Treasuries, and the bar chart on the lower left shows the laddered maturities. Again, that gives us an option to reinvest our funds as they mature in the current higher yielding rates, or we can always take advantage of our, use the funds for cash flow if we need it for that. So the ladder maturities really keeps us with some good options. This demonstrates policy compliance. All of our various investment types are well within our established policy compliance. For example, the US Treasuries, we could have 100% of our portfolio in Treasuries if we showed, and we have 47% currently. And lastly, we have our portfolio allocation over four quarters, and really this shows just an increase to the US Treasuries. That's where the value has been more recently, so we've taken advantage of the Treasury yields that are a little higher right now. It's a safe and liquid investment. So Treasuries are a little bit higher allocation, and all other types are a little bit lower allocation. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Joe? Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. Another question, just a comment, and I say this every time. I just, once again, I represent the council on this here committee, and Finance, Lomax, Paula, and Joe do a phenomenal job. And it's a lot of money, too, right? And they really have to watch it and make sure we are investing it in the right way. So I just want to say kudos to the team, and I really enjoy our quarterly meetings we talk through this year. So keep up the good work. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I do kind of have a question. I guess not really a question, just observation that our corporate percentage went up a little bit since December, but it's still lower than what it was earlier last year.
Yeah, we, when we reinvest, when we have investments mature and reinvest, our advisors at PFM really take a look at where the value is, and mostly lately it has been in US Treasuries, but corporates do offer some additional yield that oftentimes is worth investing.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? I think you do a great job with this, Joe, and thank you to you and your team. It was good to see you. Alright, next up, we have economic and community development. Councilmember Larmour, are you able to take over?
Yeah, yeah. I'm having to introduce Matt Gilbert, who's my name to talk about this topic, which is a review appointment to the public facilities board.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmour, Councilmembers. I'm here tonight to recommend another term on the Public Facilities District Board for Greg Hafner. This would be, I believe, a third term for Mr. Hafner, who is serving on position two. As you have in your, as standard in your packet, there are five members of this board, two, three of which are appointed through consultation with community groups, and two of which that are appointed independently. Mr. Hafner is appointed independently. And so this is a group that makes decisions and is kind of a board of directors for the Public Facilities District, which was established to help build Showware and manage its ongoing operations, or deal with the finances, and kind of make the big decisions over there. So Mr. Hafner's been a reliable member, done a great community service, so I'm happy to recommend him tonight.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Matt? Then I will read the motion. I move to reappoint Greg Hafner to position two on the Public Facilities District Board for a four-year term from September 1st, 2025 through August 31st, 2029. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Are there any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Matt. And next up, we have Kristen Hollinsworth to give us an update on the REPO initiative, REPO Kent initiative, and this is information only.
Good evening, Council. I'm sorry I couldn't be there with you in person, but I am recovering, almost done with my medical leave, so I was cleared to come remotely to present. This is our final presentation on the phase one ordinance. There will be a special meeting on June 30th for a vote on this ordinance, but I'm here tonight to share basically the overview of what's in the ordinance and what we've done. Can I get a thumbs up that I am sharing the hard way? Okay, great, thank you. And I cannot see you all as I'm presenting, so please feel free to interrupt. I'm going to give a brief overview on the engagement and outreach we've done since we released the draft ordinance, then give an overview of the ordinance, and I'll also incorporate how we incorporated comments that we received during our outreach, and then discuss next steps. So again, tonight, this is the last briefing you all will receive. June 30th is a special council meeting. The deadline to adopt this is June 30th, so we are taking full advantage of the time we have to adopt this first round of ordinances for housing. We will have a second phase of this project. On June 30th, it will be the City Attorney's Office presenting just kind of the final approval as to form the draft ordinance that is in your packet, is what we are planning on moving forward. So there's several efforts that are underway in this ordinance. It is one massively large ordinance that includes several efforts that the state had had new legislation over the last two biting legislative cycles that we needed to incorporate by this June 30th deadline. There's a new one that I highlighted in Fox Flow that Congress hadn't originally flagged that we also needed to incorporate, so I'll talk a little bit about that one as well. But again, the primary purpose of this is to adopt new state legislation before the deadline. If we don't act by June 30th, the way that the state laws are written is such that state model ordinances will apply instead. And really, we want to make sure that we're applying the state laws in a way that is context-sensitive to Kent City Comprehension Plan and our other provisions. So the first part is, I'm going to just talk a little bit. We released the draft ordinance in May. We've had several conversations with you all about this, as well as Ladies and Planning Board engagement for this one. Because of a lot of required must-do items, we didn't do as big of extensive conversations with the broader community. It was more informative then, because there wasn't a lot of opportunity for the public to change the direction, because the state had a lot of requirements we just have to meet. And so we did website and email announcements. It was also a shout-out to our content media team. They did a great campaign on social media to let the public know what's happening. We also did a CIPA notice of determination in that comment period closed without any comments. We met specifically with the Master Builders Association to talk with them about what this means on the ground, and they had some really insightful feedback that we did adjust our ordinance on. There was also a lot of agreement that phase two, and we are under that shot clock, and we have a little bit more time, that there's a lot of effort that we want to do further, to further this going forward. And then we did this commerce. There's a required 68 notice to the state for them to review, and we had a meeting with them, some feedback. We did receive four written comments, which are attached in your packet, and then Ladies and Planning Board last week on the public hearing, and there were two public comments. One was specific to the Milk Creek Historic Preservation Area, and the other one was really applauding the city on meeting the deadlines and asking that we accelerate the newer state legislation that was just adopted in 2025 sooner rather than later. So those are, those were the comments we received. Just a quick overview of what's in the ordinance. I'm not going to go through section by section. We've discussed a lot of it, but I just wanted to get to the crux of some of the main things that this ordinance does. The first one is our zoning consolidation. So we've discussed this a lot, but just a reminder that a lot of these former terms like SR 4.5, single-family residential, four and a half units per acre, doesn't really make sense anymore, because we have a per-unit, units per lot density. So we are doing a renaming and then consolidating our zones as needed. This is really more of a procedural item, and so we'll be working to update the zoning map before it becomes effective in the end of July. And a lot of this was really done because of the middle housing code. So state law requires that all lots that are traditionally known as single-family residential have four, now must allow four units per lot. We also recognize that there's some additional provisions for density if it's within closer areas to transit or units are affordable. Two ADUs are allowed as part of that. They don't have to allow in addition. And so if someone chooses to do an ADU, that is in addition to what's allowed on the units per lot category. And then we've also talked about unit types allowed. So within each lot, a single-family detached units, accessory rolling units, and the middle housing types are allowed. And it does vary whether you're closer to transit or not, and in an effort to incentivize more intensity in housing closer to transit. One of the things that we are adopting is unit lot subdivisions. So this is basically saying, it's a home ownership opportunity. So typically, the provisions for subdivisions in the lot dimensional standards apply to every single lot. Because of this infill development, it wouldn't make sense for each single individual unit to necessarily have a five-foot side setback and a 10-foot rear setback as they're onsite. So you can see in this example, it's a way to create additional ownership lots, where the outside of the lot, which is the parent lot, complies with all of our standards, and the project as a whole complies with those standards, but each of the individual lots, it may not comply. So this is, you know, the maximum allowed impervious surface on a lot of site coverage. That overall for the entire lot doesn't change, but within each of the individual lots, it may be slightly different as the individual lot compared to the parent lot or that larger lot as a whole. We are doing this right now and allowing it. We're limiting it to nine units, which is through our short subdivision process. The Master Builders Association did write a letter, we met with them, and they would like to see this expanded to full subdivisions. We agree that this makes a lot of sense for full subdivisions, but we want to have more time to discuss with council, as well as the public, the site design principles, and how we make larger-scale development really work for the community of Kent. And so we're right now limiting it to nine units. We're in compliance with the law, but there is opportunity to expand in phase two. Another part is STEP Housing. So we talked to you about this. It stands for emergency shelters, transitional housing, emergency housing, and permanent supporting housing. We talked about the changes before. One of the big things that Commerce flagged originally, we weren't proposing to allow permanent support housing and transitional housing in our agriculturalisms, which seemed realistic to us, and we thought seemed reasonable, because those lands are meant for, they either have a lot of flooded areas and a lot of environmentally sensitive aridness, or they also have lands that we want to preserve for other requirements like our county, county way planning policies. For this one, Congress said no. The state says anywhere where you allow housing, you have to allow these two additional housing types. So we did add those as allowed, but the unfortunate caveat is they still must comply with the underlying zoning requirement. So for example, in our ADD-10 zone, you get one unit per 10 acres. So theoretically, someone, instead of having their farmhouse, could put a permanent support housing unit or transitional housing unit for 10 acres on that land. It's highly unlikely it's going to happen, though, because the scale of financing for these types of special housing that are extremely, extremely low income really wouldn't scale at that. So theoretically, we're allowing it now, but the reality is we don't anticipate it really being developed in those areas. And then the last one, this came out from Commerce, is there's a state law that says residential bonuses must be allowed for properties that are providing affordable housing that are co-located with religious institutions. This is a law that was adopted several years ago, and it's one of those things that the city has the opportunity to be more reactionary and respond to it if someone comes and requests it. Commerce was highly recommending that we incorporate what that bonus should be. The state law is very bait on what the bonus should be. Some jurisdictions are doing increases in site coverage, some are doing extra units, others are doing height increases. We are proposing to allow an extra story or 10 feet in building height, but not overall unit numbers at this point, to allow for the, because typically larger sites already have higher unit allotments than they would be allowed anyways. So this would be, our proposal is to incorporate a bonus in the form of a height as opposed to strict numbers. The other reason we're not encouraging or proposing to include a number is some of our zones don't actually have density limits. So if we think, because this provision applies to all religious institution properties, regardless of if they're in single-family zones, or in our mixed-use zones, or in our downtown, some of our zones don't actually have densities. And so it'd be a little bit weird to say you can have a 10% or a 5% increase in density if we don't have a maximum density listed. And so we felt that the height provision was, was a way to accommodate that. So other ordinance highlights, really this effort before you, the ordinance before you implements the state management in a way that's consistent with the Kent Comprehensive Plan and local context. Council will have the opportunity on June 30th to vote to adopt this ordinance. If council votes not to adopt, the provision then in the state law is that the state's standard ordinance, which has a lot of other kind of maximum of everything without local context, would apply until we adopted the ordinance. This ordinance also utilizes scalable density, so we're reducing some procedural permitting timeline labs that can cause, that can be caused through the subdivision process, but trying again to make more certainty and make permitting faster when it, when the lag in time is really procedural and doesn't yield any benefits for us. So working to reduce those permit times. We do incorporate additional incentives for retaining existing homes and trees that are not in the state's ordinance, so this is another benefit or bonus if we adopt this ordinance. And then we have revised our parking mandates. Again, doesn't mean that developers have to build the minimum. They can still build more than what we are requiring, but we as a city can't require that. So at Ladies and Planning Board, there were two recommendations. The first was that they recommend council adopt the ordinance that's before you tonight, subject to the minor amendments that the City Attorney's Office is making. This has been a light, smooth process, plus we've had, several people have medical leave in the last month or so. And so what we're proposing is this is the ordinance before you. Shout-out to Deja and Christina Schep and the City Attorney's Office, because they've been working really hard. They're going to work to get it in approved as to form for the June 30th adoption deadline. The second recommendation we had from Ladies and Planning Board is a little bit of a weird technicality, so we didn't add any new requirements for design. technicality, so we didn't add any new requirements for design review, but we relocated them and there was an understanding that, or a misunderstanding that we require window shutters as one of our design elements. What the code actually says, you have to meet required design elements in three of the six options. And then there's a seventh option that's really flexible that says, or another method that the planning director approves. And so at this time, the Ladies of Planning Board said, we'd like to remove that shutters requirement. Right? I noted that it's actually not a requirement, it's a way to meet the design standards. So if we remove it, we're actually in effect making it less options for a developer to meet the design opportunities right now for those design standards. So at this point, staff's recommending that we move more room in the ordinance as proposed. We have acknowledged already that the design requirements for housing in our lower density areas for single family and multifamily does need extensive review. We have saved that for phase two because it's not a requirement at this time to do and we'd already budgeted with our consultants and had in the project scope to talk about it. So instead of removing the requirement for shutters, it's one of the options to comply. We would like to wait on that and have a more holistic conversation about, about design standards and what we're trying to achieve with that, both with the community and council as well as the builders association. So it was a recommendation by Ladies and Planning Board and, you know, it's council's discretion of whether they would like to remove that at this time, but staff would recommend, not because it just removes an option for compliance without really understanding kind of the full, the full opportunity that it would make it, one, one less opportunity to comply right now. So coming up, we have June 30th, our council's special meeting, where you all will vote on this ordinance. I am not available to attend, so if you have questions on the ordinance, this is, this is the time to discuss and then your vote will be on the 30th. We will have a standard procedure of 30 days effective date for this first ordinance. So that means starting July 30th. New permits for middle housing and all of the other provisions in the new state laws can be accepted by the city for processing. And then we anticipate phase two. Honestly, there's probably several phases we could do to further implement. There was a lot of really good conversations of things that would further our comprehensive plan and that aligning with a lot of the city's vision for housing. But because of the timeline that we have, we are, we are sticking to just the mandatory requirements right now and we'll pick off those. Would like to get to items starting this summer through our phase two. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
So Kristen, I have a question. So looking at the public comment that was included in the agenda package, it looks like most of that we will be tackling in phase two. Is that the intent?
Correct, yes. There were some items that we did clean up, but most of them were not mandatory regulatory requirements and we'll address them in phase two.
Okay, great. Questions from anyone else?
Councilmember Fitcher and Councilwoman Trump are up questions.
My question was just, what is FFHA?
Oh, Federal Fair Housing Loss.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. I just want to give you kudos to your staff, to the Land Use and Planning Board, to all the people that you had engaged in this process. You talked about multiple groups. I feel like we're rushing into this, but I realize we have to because we have a deadline that we have to meet. And I know we're further along than other cities in bringing this ordinance forward. So thank you again. You have done an outstanding job. This presentation was very clear. You highlighted the important things that we need to consider in our vote on the 30th and I greatly appreciate that. And I support the ordinance as it is in our packet with those edits. So thank you.
Any other questions or discussions?
Yeah, Councilwoman Larmour, and I just want to say also, thank you, Kristen. But I do have a comment about the, the shutters, your recommendations from Land Use and Planning Board. So are we planning on looking at really the impact of it? Like how, does it, I, I don't know, that's why I'm asking, like how big of the impact is that design standard going to make?
Yeah, so, so we did not add any new design standards. We just carried them over from, they were hidden in our definitions for some reason. So we, what we did is we moved them from the definitions into where we talk about our design standards in Title 15. And so it looks like it's new code, but it's really just moving them. Those design standards, my understanding is they were implemented when there was a lot of development that was happening, not in Kent, but around Kent, with large garages spacing towards the front and then just big blocks of houses. And the idea was that council and the community wanted some variation in design and didn't want to just see garages. And so they wanted to, to break up the massing of buildings and not have it look like it was just a street full of garages and big houses that are blocked. And so window shutters were one option. There are six other options. What we have found is design trends have changed over the last 10, 15 years that we've had these design standards. And so what we would like to do in phase two is to have a more thorough conversation about what do we want out of our design element standards and requirements? How does it serve the community? What are the potential cost benefits of it? Because sometimes it's a relatively inexpensive cost and other times it can be really expensive to do something like certain modulation types where you have walls that differ in different, different lengths. And so we want to really make sure we're making changes that it's reflecting what the community and council want and then also that we're not adding on costs that really maybe aren't achieving the benefits that we're hoping to see. So our recommendation is since this isn't a new requirement at this time and there's many ways that it can be achieved, just leave it as is and phase two will address, will address it more holistically.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Larnar, do you see any other questions or comments? Oh, Councilmember Fitcher, sorry, Councilmember Fitcher.
So would these shutters, would they be real shutters or would they be functional or non-functional really, just on the side for the looks?
Typically what, so I will say developers rarely use this as an option right now. Shutters are not necessarily invoked at the time, but they are more ornamental than functional.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, Kristen. If there's any other comments or questions, again, just kudos as has been expressed. Your team's done an incredible job on really tight deadlines and so we appreciate all the hard work and I look forward to further discussions and vote on the 30th.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, Kristen. Thank you, Councilwoman Larmour. And now next, we have public safety, Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. We got our next presentation coming from Chief Padilla is going to kick it off and we're going to be talking about the vandalism going around within Comcast and Lumen.
All right. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to have this discussion today. We wanted to take a moment to provide the council and the community with an update on how we are working to address the interrupted telecommunications services, so internet and phone services due to wire theft, a big emerging and growing problem. With me today, and I'll be calling on them shortly here, are Terry Davis, Senior Director of External Government Affairs with Comcast and Jim Reed, Regional Manager for Lumen. They both have presentations that we'll, we'll have here shortly. Before that, I wanted to take a moment to start by making it really clear to the council that it's not lost on the city staff and particularly the police department of how impactful these service interruptions are. I think it, it might be easy to say, well, yeah, someone can't surf the net, but we're talking about people not being able to go to work. We're talking about businesses not able to operate. We have seen instances where these service interruptions have impacted critical infrastructure like our 911 dispatch center operations and our school district communications and systems. So these are serious issues. They in particular are a growing trend and so that is on our radar. We wanted to own that for the community and let them know that we do take it very seriously. Second, you know, these crimes are a huge challenge. As you can imagine, there are hundreds of miles of wire and fiber throughout the city. We will have the discussion about additional officers later tonight, but you know, the reality is you could give me a thousand officers and this would still be a daunting challenge to overcome. So that said, this is why the partnerships you'll hear about today and our call in the community to aid us in being our eyes and ears in this effort are really crucial. My message to you is the police department is going to leverage every resource we can to address this issue, but we can't do it alone. And so you'll hear about that a little bit. Third, I want to be transparent. You know, as things adapt and change as new crimes come on, and this isn't necessarily a new crime and not specific to Kent, but we really were behind the eight ball on how do we address this issue? One of the major challenges we had to look at right away was that our systems for reporting crime were not set up to recognize this as a priority. So if you can imagine, it falls into first bucket of it's a property crime. Secondly, most of the reports we receive come in after the fact, so it also lowers how we triage 911 calls. And to be transparent, we were not dispatching officers immediately to respond to the scene to investigate. And so we recognize that, that has been addressed, it's been fixed. I want to assure the community and our corporate partners that when these calls come in now, it will get a priority in-person officer response. And we will deal with the investigation, which as you have heard me tell many times, we're really good at investigations after the fact. So I want to own that. And we have done several things to, to make this more effective in communications. One, we've assigned Detective Lind as the primary contact and liaison with the security teams for both companies. And we have established command level lines of communication. So when there's an issue, something doesn't go right, we're on it right away, we'll address it. Lastly, I do think it's important to note that while this was a problem, it has allowed us to come together with Comcast and Lumen to achieve better results in dealing with these wire thieves and reducing the impact to our community. As you will hear from them, some of the things that have been done on their part in terms of enhancing security, hardening, hardening targets has come about and they have been really gracious in even coming and providing training to our officers so that they have better recognition. And they've worked with us to put out a video, a public service video, so that our community members can be aware of what it looks like and how they can help us by reporting it right away. So this will remain a significant challenge. And while I expect we will reduce the number of crimes occurring in Kent, I don't want to sound like we have solved the problem and there won't be future interruptions, right? But as with anything, my commitment is if there is something we can do to reduce those crimes, if there was something we can do to identify and arrest suspects, that is what we're going to do. I will come back up to the podium for questions and answers, sir. But now I'd like to go ahead and call upon our corporate partners and I believe Mr. Gene Reed is going to start first.
Thanks, Chief Padilla. Councilmembers, I appreciate the, the opportunity to come and speak. And I do have some slides. I think Comcast slides are first, so we may need to scroll through and then if you...
Yeah, paper copy.
Okay, perfect.
What is your title from this group?
I'm Manager of Regional Operations for Lumen or CenturyLink. I, I manage, I manage shoreline all the way down to Windlock and the ocean to the mountains. And I'll tell you that this isn't a Kent issue. This really is a rural kind of area issue. So Maple Valley, Auburn, Enhamclaw, Buckley, Crystal Mountain, those kinds of areas where the, the individuals can get into the trees, they can climb trees to access the aerial, the aerial plant. And, and to be completely honest, the, the challenge is this. Comcast, Verizon, T-Mobile, all those other companies typically when they are impacted, it's, it's that they are collateral damage. The individuals are trying to get to the copper. The last time I checked, copper recycling is about $4.50 a pound and it's, it's heavy. And with, with the, the challenges of the availability of the copper being in the air and our fiber overlashed to the copper strand, the fiber infrastructure is at risk as well. And that's where a lot of the higher impacted services lie on that fiber service. So you, you have the, the pictures in front of you. The one that, that I would like to highlight is the, the last picture is a couple of guys laying on cable that is right next to the river. And you may not have that printed out, I don't know, I apologize. So the individuals had cut the cable and they were literally laying on the cable next to the river when our technicians showed up. They had gotten tired of their all night work events and they fell asleep. Our technician showed up, took a picture of them, called the, called the police. I won't tell you what area it wasn't in Kent. It was, but what ended up happening is, is they had woke up before law enforcement showed up and they were walking away. And the technician said, that's the two individuals. Look, here's the picture. And unfortunately, they were told, we can't apprehend them. We didn't see them taking the cable. And so those are, I think, the bigger challenges. You know, we run into law enforcement officers that are frustrated that, that Officer, or Chief Padilla mentioned that it's property crime. And so it just doesn't rise to the, to the level of, of, let me, let me restate that. In some areas, it doesn't rise to the level for prosecute, for prosecuting. I am so excited that, that Chief Padilla is, is committing to sending officers when, when these reports are made in Kent. That's not happening in other municipalities and counties that will do it. We will do an online police report and express the, the cost, the impact. I will, I will forward you the slides. I will say this, this is also a Western Washington issue. When, when, on the, the second slide that I had sent over, it's our report, it's a, it's a dashboard from our reporting damages and it's just done by technicians in the field. They don't necessarily know the, the real cost of everything. So Kent, I have a, a number there for Kent and I want to say it was year to date, a little over $2 million of cost just in Kent. But when you go to Western Washington, it is $3.35 million. And when you go to Washington State, it's $3.36 million. So the difference between Western Washington and Washington is .01 million dollars. So it's a Western Washington challenge that we're facing. And I'll, I'll wrap up with this. It's, it's not a Lumen issue, it's not a Comcast issue, it's not a Verizon issue, it's not a Kent issue, it's a community issue. And the, the impact is very real when you have people who are on life alerts that don't work and they can't call 911. Bad things can happen. And in some of our rural areas where cell phones don't have service, it's a very real concern. And it's a concern for, for myself because we have customers that are relying on those services. So I will step aside and give Terry opportunity to talk on behalf of Comcast and then I'll be available for questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to address the council. I really concur with a lot of things that Gene says. The big difference between Lumen and Comcast, Lumen's cable lines will end up somewhere. Ours just get cut and laid on the ground and then it's our, you know, outage to, to restore and to respond to. But, you know, year to date, we are at 83. And as you can see from that number, 82 of those are in the Puget Sound, we have one in Spokane. Now, we only, we don't have facilities through the central part, but I, you know, that, that falls right in line with, with what Gene is saying. It is truly a Puget Sound issue. 42 of those 82 are in the South King County area. Some of those are rural, some of those are in the cities. Kent is, is kind of at the bullseye, but that's why we're starting with Kent and really finding how we can partner. On the left side, there's great examples of, that's what Lumen or Zibley's, you know, copper pair cables look like in the back of a vehicle or in the back of a truck as they drive away. On the right side, that is us responding. You know, we have unfortunately gotten really good at responding. We're able with our... We're able with our monitoring systems to really kind of identify the location and that it is an outage for us to work within about 30 minutes. We are then... Safety is paramount because these don't always happen on back lots. Some of them do happen on archeryals, so there may be some interactions with your right-of-way inspection. But we want to make sure that our crews are safe so that we can get in there and move really quick. Most of our setup time is around two hours, and then we are working on resplicing and, you know, we are kind of restoring now within about four to eight hours. Next slide. So there we go. Perfect. You know, the big thing is, is we want you to know that, you know, we are a corporate citizen that is responding to this. We are really focused on our technology crews having the best and, you know, most innovative equipment. We've invested four to five times more this year, given the fact that it's been early 2002 across 2003 and... Or, sorry, early 2003, 2024, and 2025, that we've seen this increase in vandalism. But we've been investing in more equipment so that we're not relying upon a business partner that may be down in Pierce County to then respond to an outage in Kent. We are doing pre-fiber splicing of straps of various numbers so that as we get on-site, we can be up and splicing faster. And our splicing management is no longer a one-to-one splicing scenario. We're doing 12 or, you know, multiple splicings at a time. Because if you take your hair and take a piece of hair, that's one fiber. So they have to fuse together, so that's two fibers together. So it takes a little bit of time to get there. What are we doing from a security standpoint? We have deployed cameras. For us, again, our equipment doesn't end up in a recycling center, it just lays on the ground. So we need to help the police understand who's there. Can we get a license plate? Can we get the folks that are doing this on camera so that we can, you know, lead an investigation? We've hired business partners to help us respond and make sure that the site is maintained for that police response and investigation. Chief Padilla talked about the patrol unit training. We've done that, started here in Kent. We've now expanded that to other jurisdictions. And we also have an industry and law enforcement task force, just like stealing of cars and car theft and catalytic converters. It was those task forces that brought together, you know, the industries and the recycling centers and the law enforcement to find the patterns to help, you know, kind of build legislation. But every vandalism comes with a customer experience negative situation. So how are we responding to that? Number one, we are identifying these as vandalism right up front so that, you know, our customers know that this is, you know, this is basically a mini storm, you know, that we are dealing with and recovering from. We are sending proactive messaging to them through their SMS, those that sign up for SMS. So if we have customers that aren't, they can go to their Xfinity app and get signed up for that. We are proactively posting on our blogs the location and what our ETAs are. And we're also very focused on trying to provide other means for backing up the internet so that people can get connected faster. So there's some examples of the SMS and the blog posts. Next slide. As Chief Padilla said, it's really going to be about partnerships of how we're going to solve this. It may not be eliminated completely, but we should be able to figure out how to drastically reduce. The public service announcement that we're going to show you is a great example of that. That was an outcome of sitting down with the mayor and your administrative staff to brainstorm, "How can we continue to amplify this and share the message?" The police patrol trainings was identified, and also that 911 response. And I know that the mayor being on Valleycom has already brought that to Valleycom to help resolve as well. But the city has done a great job of amplifying the communications about these, and that's very important so that the public that may not have access to that SMS messaging can understand what's happening. The council awareness, the reason that we're here tonight is so that you understand, and as your constituents or maybe, I know they're going to be frustrated on this, but they're reaching out to you, you can say, "Hey, we are partnering with Comcast on this." And you can then also amplify that message out to your community because it really is about see something, say something, and making sure that we can identify who these people are that are doing this. Now, there is some legislative solutions that are going on. We talked about trying to make sure that this is not just a property crime, that it is a critical infrastructure. There was a bill introduced in this last session that put it more as a felony status to provide the prosecutors and law enforcement the right tools to go after these. So it's not, you know, just going after, you know, where it may end up. It's really trying to identify those persons or organizations of persons that is doing this damage to our critical communication lines. So I think with that, we have the video that we partnered on with your police department that I know we're going to be amplifying, and I know that the city is intending on amplifying as well.
Hi, I'm Sergeant Chelsea Pribble with the Kent Police Department. We need to talk about a serious issue affecting the Kent community, copper theft. Thieves are targeting telecom cables, cutting lines that power your internet phone and even 911 services. This crime affects everyone. Students can't access online classes, businesses lose sales, people working from home are cut off, and even emergency services may be delayed. Cutting telecom cables is a crime. We're investigating and will prosecute, but we need your help. If you see someone tampering with cable lines or know anything about these crimes, report it by calling 911. Your tip could keep someone safe. If you see something, say something.
I just want to say thank you to Terry and Gene for coming today, and Councilmember Boyce for any questions, or Council President.
Well, I'm sure we got plenty of questions. I'm going to start with a few, and then I'll go around and make sure everybody got questions. I think, Terry, a couple of things that I want to talk about. We can talk about the SMS, you know. Well, I hear what we hear from a lot of our people there that it's not accurate. I mean, because sometimes you say you'll be back on four hours and it could be 24 hours. So I think that's one thing, I mean, if, like, say you see something, say something. I mean, if you could be accurate with your SMS, if the people know if they're going to be down 24 hours, then so be it. But when you tell they're going to be down two hours and it's two days later, I think they really get people, so we hear a lot about that.
We'll take that back.
Just something to take back.
That's expressed.
And I think with the copper, Chief, what do they do with this copper? Do they go and... Is it like big copper, small copper? I'm just trying to get an idea of what it looks like.
You know, it was alluded to, there was legislation passed that is supposed to make it more difficult for them to recycle copper, but the reality is that it still can be done. You may... No, we're not that far from a major recycling center of our own, not in the city, but they are moving this. If you're asking about why the correlation, it is to money for other illicit issues like narcotics consumption and what have you.
Do you see, I know we had issue with the catalytic converter, right? They finally put something in place to kind of pretty much stop that. Is it possible that the copper could fall in that same category, or is it too...
I don't have the background, maybe one of these gentlemen do. I understand that some industries are moving away from the copper wire infrastructure, but I imagine that's hundreds of billions of dollars and decades ago.
Yeah. It's... I had a conversation with somebody in my industry, and they said, "Why don't you just put fiber up? Like, hey, the copper's cut, just put the fiber up." You can't splice copper to fiber. It's two different technologies. I won't get too deep, but fiber is light and copper is transmitting electrical pulses. So you can't... So the equipment can't interact with each other that way? And I will tell you that it is not, in my opinion, I've been in... I've worked for Lumen for 24 years. I do not believe this is now just drug seekers trying to get money to go get a fix. There was... I have done a couple of news spots for television, and one of them, they mentioned drugs. In King County, there's evidence of an individual that in a one-year period of time had recycled, they had evidence of about $120,000 worth of recycled copper to that individual from record. So we have seen people out there looking like or trying to look like people doing work for us. Flaggers, hard hats, safety vests, bucket trucks. They look like they are a crew doing work on our behalf, and they are taking the copper. And it is, this is organized. This is not just somebody trying to get a fix.
Then my last question, I'm going to start with my Councilmember here. I lost my thought. I'm going to start with you, Tony, and then we'll work our way down.
Thank you, councilmember. First of all, I want to thank you both for being here. I know this is a difficult conversation, and you're coming before people, you know, and speaking on a topic that has caused a lot of issues for the city. So I appreciate your transparency and your being here to communicate. That's wonderful. Chief, this might be a question for you, but, you know, talking about the copper and how it's recycled, do we have the ability to go after some of these people that are buying the copper? Or what are we doing with that?
That work continues, and the answer is yes, that can be done. There are other challenges in the system that it also include, as was alluded to, charging and prosecution. And so the effort to get this elevated so that everyone in the criminal justice system understands it's not just wire, it's not just property, that it's impacting some vital, critical life services for people, is slow, but I think that will come around. We have made arrests and we have prosecuted cases. If for some reason we're not able to get the felony charged across the line, I'll... I know I can, I speak for my law department partners, we will find ways in the misdemeanor court to address this as well. So the answer is yes, it's pretty difficult to prove, and it requires us, and we will... This is one of the things that's on our to-do list, to go back at the recyclers and help remind them of their responsibility in not knowingly taking in likely stolen metal.
Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Chief Keetel, Sergeant Pribble, she did a great job. My question is about, in areas where it's just the fiber, have you tried putting up signs or stickers that say "No Copper Here"? And how's that worked?
I had this question, and depending upon the location, we... I mean, the amount of mileage that we have, I don't know if these people would even read it and all of that. But that has been brought up in that task force, looking for ways to kind of identify it and break it out from, okay, this is not copper. You know, there's been thoughts of educational campaigns, but where do you start from there? Because, again, these organized crime units or people that want to do this will, you know, kind of ignore, you know, kind of those campaigns.
Council President, you have any questions?
Thank you, Councilmember Boyce. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Gene. And thank you, Chief Padilla. I know I've been impacted by those, because I work remotely, I work from home, and had days where I have had to find hotspots or other ways to connect. And so we've heard from a lot of our residents who are impacted. So I appreciate you coming here, and I appreciate your partnership with our police department and other jurisdictions on trying to get to the bottom of this so we can at least do something. And please do let us know how we can help support in the legislation, at least myself, I will be there because I know how many residents it's impacting and how important it is for us to have access to internet. So with that, I appreciate you and thank you.
Can I say something really quick to that?
We'll come to you, Lomra. Go ahead, go ahead.
My opinion, Gene's opinion. I was telling Terry on the phone yesterday, every job that produces legitimate copper to recycle, every job, has a job number. So if we have cable being placed and they run it, they run it long so that they can cut it off and splice, there's some scrap, and it's legitimate recyclable copper for the contractor doing the work. Or if we've converted an area to fiber and we're removing the copper because it's no longer needed, that has a job number. Every legitimate recyclable copper from Lumen, I can guarantee you, from Zipley, I can guarantee you, as you all would understand, a job requires a job number so you can track the cost and all that. I am proposing, and have tried proposing, that every recycling agency that accepts copper or buys copper from somebody recycling be required to contact the company that the work is being done for to confirm that the job number doing the work legitimately produced this type of copper and this amount of copper. It then legitimizes the recycling for those that are recycling, and it also puts another barrier to those that are not doing it in a legitimate manner. So thank you for your time.
We'll go to Councilmember Lomra, then we'll come to you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Lomra, please.
Thank you. So actually, on that, kind of that same idea, I love the job number confirmation idea, are you... What is the pushback? Why have we not done this at the state level or legislated this yet? Are you getting pushback from parties in the industry, or what's keeping this from happening?
Number one, I think that as part of the task force, the recyclers are in there. I know that there was legislation done on the catalytic converter that did put a lot of regulation in front. I'm not going to say that that's a reason for not adding more, but I think they're trying to make sure that it's reasonable and enforceable so that the law enforcement can rely upon it. That idea also doesn't stop them from taking it to other states that do not have as complicated or more regulatory environment. We know that we've seen some of it go to Idaho or other, you know, Oregon where they may not be up to speed. I'm not saying it should not be done, I'm just telling you those are some of the reasons. At AWC next week, we are going to have a session on Thursday afternoon, and the recycling organization and association will be a part of that as well.
Okay, great. And then my second question, actually from you on Comcast, you mentioned that your cables just lay on the ground. Is it... Are they just mistakenly thinking they're copper? Or are they unable to tell that it's...
Yeah, most of them don't know the difference. You know, they may see that we have a bigger bundle, and they may go, "Hey, there's got to be some copper in there." And they cut it, and they immediately do not find copper. They just lay it on the ground or let it hang there on the poles. And that picture that was on the right side, you'll see halfway through, there's a Lumen line in front, and then our crews are working on the back half. So that's an example of, you know, kind of what we roll up on.
Thank you, Gene and Terry and Chief. I guess my question's already been asked probably three or four different times, and I like to put emphasis on that. If we go after the buyers of this copper, I mean, put heavy pressure on them, start prosecuting them, you know, they'll get the message. And then I just heard that people take this stuff out of state, these are some real serious people then. But like I said, if we could focus on our area, go after the buyers here in our area, say, "Hey, if you buy copper, you know, you could lose your license, you could go to jail, and you have a felony placed on you." I mean, go after these buyers. I mean, go after these, these buyers. And two, this is for Terry, I believe, uh, for customer experience, you said that there's a backup option for customers who have experienced these events. And how do we access that, that backup option?
So that is something that we're looking at as part of our Xfinity Mobile that we have with our cellular service, um, that connects in with our modem. So we're, we're looking at that and, and trying to figure out how, how to roll that out. Cause I, obviously we can't predict, uh, the next, um, round, but we have seen some of these where, uh, they've been within blocks of each other. So we repair, uh, one side and then, uh, you know, a day later, maybe about, uh, half a mile down the road, they, uh, go back at it. So we're trying to figure out, okay, uh, when customers have had multiple, are there , uh, options that we can, uh, bring to the table to help them, uh, find a better solution?
Okay, so it's a work in progress then. So I hope, hopefully that when you do come up with the option, I hope it's not expensive because right now my cable bill is killing me. And two, when we lose this service during the day, how many hours or how much time does it take for us to get compensated on our bill? I mean, how do we get compensated for a bill that we already paid, but then we done lost five, six, seven, eight hours of service?
Uh, you know, we deal with, uh, our customers individually and, and, uh, people can call up for credit. We know that you're in an outage. And, uh, uh, there's also means, uh, on the apps that, uh, people can, uh, request that, uh, credit. But most of the time it's, it's in that, you know, our, our average, I've looked at, uh, the data, we're in that eight-hour range trying to get even, uh, quicker. But, you know, we, we roll into those fibers that have the, uh, the most, uh, most customers on them and bring them up. So it might be a four hour and, you know, depending upon, uh, the, the, the different customers that, that are impacted.
Okay, cause you know, right now, a lot of people are dissatisfied right now with Comcast. You know, people are just looking around for streaming service or easy fiber, anything that comes along. I mean, you, I could probably drive through the neighborhood in the van, offering some kind of wireless service and everybody probably buy my service because everybody, they're, they're just extremely dissatisfied with Comcast right now because of this. And I know it's not you guys' fault, but right now we need some, I don't know, some reassuring, you know, some reassuring to, to the-
It's a very competitive marketplace out there and we take, uh, our services very seriously. Um, you know, we, we are, you know, not happy with this situation, um, you know, and, and there's some things that are, are really more of a response, uh, to, to get back up and going, but we need to find a, a long-term solution, uh, for this.
Okay, so I, I wish you luck, okay? Thank you, Terry.
Councilmember Fenture, anything you wanna add?
Thank you. So if you were to look at a heat map, if I was to look at a heat map, would I be able to see, you already said that in the rural areas, that a lot of it happens there, but for areas like Kent, would I be able to look and see, because we've had a number of outages, that some areas are hit more than others? And are there areas that are repeat for the theft?
We've, we've tracked it that way, we've looked at it that way, but that, uh, you know, that's how we are looking at it for deploying our cameras. We actually learned from Lumen, uh, who, uh, down in Louisiana and Texas, uh, are getting impacted even heavier, uh, than, than we are up here. Um, and, uh, but that's how we are looking at it. And yes, we, we have heat maps and all of that. I didn't necessarily want to, uh, uh, put it in our presentation, but, uh, we are looking at, at that, uh, trying to, uh, you know, kind of approach it from that standpoint. But it is seriously whack-a-mole, um, uh, in terms of trying to figure out, okay, where, where to go next.
And are you, is Comcast, is Lumen, is Comcast going to eventually move to fiber? Because the two, you can't talk with the two technologies now.
We have miles and miles and miles and miles of fiber in our plant. The, uh, services to the residents, we go to a neighborhood node and then we utilize our COAC service. That is not the twisted pair of copper that Lumen, uh, uses.
Okay.
But all of our, uh, backbone services, all of our, uh, a lot of our business services is fiber. So we are probably, uh, 90 to 95% fiber and then, uh, we have our, uh, COAC plant which, uh, offers a great, uh, connection.
So with Lumen then, are you in the process of trying to convert since the two can't talk or undergrounding or are you looking at other methodologies to be able to get that service to us so that it cannot be, is easily stolen?
Yeah, yes ma'am. Uh, we are. Uh, you, you may be familiar that quantum fiber is, is part of our, our portfolio. And so quantum fiber being built out to the neighborhoods is, is definitely how we're converting over to, um, uh, to fiber. However, due to regulatory issues, um, w- we can't force customers off of their copper telephone service. Though, though we would, uh, prefer them go to our fiber product, um, it's much easier to, to manage and, and deal with, but, um, there, there are those things that we're doing. We do have a, like Comcast, we are using a heat map. Unfortunately, my slide presentation didn't get here, but it is on there. And we do have, um, we do have scenarios where they come back. We will place the copper and come back the next day to splice it and the copper that we just placed is, is gone. So we'll, we'll deploy, um, game cameras, trail cameras that have a GPS system inside of it. And, uh, sometimes the, the camera will get stolen and, um, it's been helpful. You know, somebody's looking and trying to figure out how to shut it off and we're getting pictures and then they take it home and, and so those are, um, those are the challenges that we get to face on a day-to-day basis.
Okay, we're gonna wrap this up. We'll probably go on and on and on. The last question, uh, just out of the 42, how many of those, although belong in Kent? Do we know roughly?
About 20, it's about 29.
Okay, good. And what is your next step? Are you gonna go to like Auburn and Renton as well too to try to-
Yeah, Federal Way and Will, uh, have, have really taken up-
Okay.
-where, you know, a lot of the lines do kind of follow the, uh, the Green River.
Okay.
And those, uh, and four go up on the hills. We have, uh, one, uh, heading up, uh, that was kind of within a park. And again, like, uh, Jean said, uh, they, they climbed the trees to get to it and actually cut it within the trees.
Okay. We, we done. Chief, any others wanna say before we call it?
Nope, that's all we had. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, guy, really appreciate it. We're a partnership and we're as a council member, we get calls all the time, emails, and, uh, we'll let them know what we are doing to try to make this better. So thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Council President?
Thank you, Councilmember Voice. And with that, we'll move on to Public Works. Councilmember Fenture?
Thank you, Madam President. We are going to hear from Lucy Liu about the commute trip reduction resolution. Lucy Wu.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Lucy and I am the Transportation Planner for the Department of Public Works and, uh, why the presentation isn't showing? But, um, for tonight, in the interest of time, I'd like to ask for the adoption of the CTR four-year plan. The presentation is similar to what I gave last time at the last committee of the whole and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Councilmember Lumer? In that case, I move to adopt Resolution 2093, adopting the commute trip reduction four-year plan for 2025, 2029.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We've talked about this enough, that made it nice and easy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and now Tony DiNati is going to come up.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, councilmembers. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this afternoon. My name's Tony DiNati, Conservation Coordinator here in the Public Works Department. Today I'm gonna be asking you to accept a grant the city will be receiving. It's the Local Solid Waste Financial Assistance Agreement, uh, yep, from the Department of Ecology. Okay. This is a two-year matching grant that starts Gi-, uh, July 1st, sorry, July 1st and goes through, um, June of 2027. Uh, the city will be receiving $169,654 from the Department of Ecology on a cost basis as tasks are completed. The required 25% match of the city will, uh, that comes from two other solid waste grants that I manage and also the Drainage Utility Fund as well as any other appropriate project-specific funds. And then staff time to manage this grant is 100% grant and utility funded. So over the next two years, the grant will fund our ever-popular recycling events, our Saturday big, large events and our Friday mini-events. This grant helps make those events free to the public to come and dispose of those hard-to-recycle items. Also, the funds will help, uh, pay for the cleanup of encampment debris on city property, mainly on drainage and street, uh, city right-of-way. Uh, this money, we are extremely grateful to receive and are dependent on to, uh, continue to fund and make these, uh, programs available and especially the recycling events for free. Speaking of the recycling events, we had a really, uh, successful event, uh, just a couple Saturdays ago, uh, up at the Canyon Ridge Middle School, uh, Saturday, June 7th. We had 1,034 cars come by and drop off, um, 111 tons of material. So it was slammed all day. We sold rain barrels and compost bins as well, sold out of those. Uh, we will have more of those at our October event, so, yeah, yeah, this, this grant makes all that happen, so. With that, I'll take any questions.
We just love free money. Councilmember, you had a question or comment?
Tony, I just wanna say, great work, um, great job getting funds and then using grant funds to do that match. And these are great events, so, great work.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to say that I, uh, I drove by the, the event at Canyon Ridge and I was so, I couldn't believe the lines, it was incredible. Um, has, has that been the largest response you've had to one?
Um, not the largest, but it, we typically held the spring and fall events down at Hogan Park, which is a much larger facility, uh, and kind of off the beaten path more on Russell Road. So we can funnel cars in and move them around within the park. Being, it's up on the East Hill, a lot of people come, um, but it's just a smaller facility than the park is and so it does kind of back up a little bit and we, the queue line gets pretty long, but, uh, we moved people through, no one was turned away and, uh, it's fun of it.
Be impressive, so good job.
Thank you.
Good job and the grant funds.
Thank you so much.
This is, uh, you know, it helps the, the whole community. One, it helps divert, anything that we can recycle is going to help divert from the landfill, which we know is going to extend that life. But it's just a wonderful, uh, program that our, our residents, our residents can take advantage of because they're not tied to what they can fit into their blue bin. They can clean whenever they want, you know, that we have these throughout the year. And so they're in the neighborhood, it's an easy program that they can follow, help clean and get rid of some of the things that they don't want. Anyone else? Yes?
So I got a question. I'm reading in the, the summary and it talks about, uh, the King County Solid Waste Division, Waste Reduction, and, uh, has this Waste Management Program, it talks about their grant cannot be used for encampment cleanup. What do you mean by that? I mean-
Yeah, so this, the, this grant, the LSWIF is, we call it for short, this grant is a state, uh, grant and so they do allow funds from this grant to, uh, allow for clean, encampment debris cleanup. Where the other two are specifically for like waste reduction, recycling or hazardous waste. So those are more for the recycling, trying to reduce what's going into the garbage, uh, the landfill, uh, while the other one, it's kind of two different goals for each of the grants.
Okay, I understand that. Well, thanks a lot for that.
Yes, thank you.
Nice thing with this also partnering all of these together is it even pays for staff time, so, which is nice. There is no one else? Madam Chair, I move to accept grant funds from the Department of Ecology for the Solid Waste Management, Local Solid Waste Financial Grant, Financial Assistance Grant in the amount of $169,654 for recycling collection events and encampment cleanups, amend the budget, authorize expenditures of the grant funds and authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Public Works Director and City Attorney.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries and we now have, we're able to accept that money? Thank you very much, Tony. Great job.
Thank you.
And that is it for us, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. With that, we are adjourned with committee of the whole and we'll be back with the council workshop. Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, June 17. We have two items on our agenda. First up, we have Greater Kent Historical Society Annual Report, and this Julie, or we have Vijay Kopaki, welcome.
Thank you so much for having me tonight, and for having the Kent Historical Museum and Greater Kent Historical Society with us as well. It's such a pleasure to be here. When I started this work many years ago, more than I would care to admit at this point, I often asked myself, what is a museum? And what I found over time and through my work is that a museum is so much more than just a collection of artifacts. It's a living space, or it should be, where stories are shared and connections are made, and the past informs our shared future. Throughout my career, leading up to this moment, taking over the role at the Kent Historical Museum, I've been drawn to the voices of people whose lives have so frequently been left out of the main story, what I like to call the hidden voices at the margins of history. And in my work, I have always sought to bring those voices into the spotlight. It is the very foundational philosophy of what I do. In my past work, I have spotlighted revolutionary women and their dangerous ideas at Pearl Esbuck International. I've shared the story of Jack, a self-freed enslaved man at Peter Wentz Farmstead, and been recognized for that work by the National Park Service and their Underground Railroad Network to Freedom. I've honored indigenous communities and embedded the stories of the Lenape in my programs, and I've partnered with LGBTQ elders to preserve their stories for generations to come in an oral history project. And most recently, in Sugar Town, Pennsylvania, I uncovered the life of Rachel, a free black woman, whose story shaped the legacy of that small town in rural Pennsylvania. And so, all of that work has led me here, to you, from across the country, from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, to Kent, Washington. What drew me most to this role and to the Kent Historical Museum is this belief that community is the single most vital resource that any museum has. I think that's especially true in a place like Kent, where so many stories are waiting to be told, and in so many different languages, by people from so many different corners of the globe. But you aren't here tonight to hear about me or my background, you're here to hear about the Kent Historical Museum, and what we've accomplished, and what we're looking forward to in 2025 and beyond. So perhaps with my background, it's no surprise that I would end up at a museum like the Kent Historical Museum, where our mission is to inspire the community to explore and discover our history. We want to educate and preserve diverse family and Kent folk storylines for the future, and especially for future generations. But we also have a vision of what museums can be, and what they should be. And the Kent Historical Museum envisions becoming a beacon for community-centered museums and historic homes, modeling how local history can be inclusive, dynamic, and deeply connected to the stories of the people it serves. We strive to be a vibrant hub for community engagement, where histories are not only preserved, but also celebrated, where difficult histories are addressed and talked about, but where we also leave plenty of room for reconciliation, celebration, healing, and Our transition process from a historic house museum in a very traditional sense to a more community-centered museum began in 2024, so I like to call our transition period, where the museum board and staff committed to reshaping our approach to history and to live up to our new mission and our vision. And this is before I came on board as the executive director, so much of this foundational work is owed to the members of the board who are here in the room with me tonight. This process of transitioning from one kind of museum to another included rethinking how we work with our community members, changing the ways we talk about history, how we interpret history, and to be more accessible, respectful, and inclusive of whose stories we include. This plan was developed based on what we call a strategic plan, which was created with support from the City of Kent. And as we transition, we're undergoing a transformation. In 2025 alone, from just before I came on board in February to now, we have undergone a huge process at the museum. If you've visited us in the past and haven't seen the museum in 2025, it's very different. First and foremost, we have moved our office space upstairs and our exhibit space downstairs as an accessibility initiative, to make sure that the focus is on visitors and their ability to access all of our exhibits. Our office space has moved upstairs, we now have rotating space for exhibits that can be curated by guest curators, which I'll talk about shortly. And we've also relocated our archives and our library in hopes that we'll create a community library space where researchers are welcome to come and go and research their projects at will. So I've talked a little bit about the change from historic house museum to a community museum. And so what that looks like for us is updating these exhibit spaces while also maintaining the historic 1908 character of the home. We've upgraded our facilities to support exhibits, activities, and programs. We have plans to align our museum collection as it exists with a new interpretive plan that I'm developing with members of our interpretive committee. And we're also including community engagement at every step of the process that we can. So to give you just a snapshot of some of the projects that we're currently working on, this is a list of some of our exhibits that are either currently on display or will be on display shortly. We have two exhibits that are about the history of COVID in Kent, one about the mutual aid response in Kent during the first year of COVID, and then another exhibit that also looks at COVID, but in kind of a compare and contrast way with the history of disease and treating disease in Kent historically. We've also updated our Shared History Gallery, which talks about the forced removal of both Japanese-Americans and Native Americans from their land, with hopes to expand that gallery, not only to talk about that thematic, but other aspects of shared history with other diverse communities as well. Another exhibition that I'm very excited to announce is tentatively titled Drawing Courage. It is about children in Ukraine during the ongoing Ukrainian crisis, using art made by artists who are still in Ukraine itself. This is particularly important to me because, as I'm sure you all know, Kent is the city in Washington that has the largest number of Ukrainian people of any city in the entire state. And so that exhibition is in partnership with a Ukrainian artist collective called Pictoric, as well as different artists and organizations here in Washington State. We also have a very recent partnership with the Kent Library. We will be rotating quarterly our exhibit installations through their library spaces. And these are just a few of those kind of choice exhibits, and a little bit of a snapshot as to what they will look like, or what they do currently look like for those that are on display. We also have a very robust program and education calendar, far too many to go into a lot of detail here, but one of the programs that we are most excited about is starting in August, August 22nd, that is called Resilient Roots. We are partnering with Native American presenters, storytellers, craftspeople, artists from the Kent community and beyond to come once a month to the museum to present their stories to the Kent audience at our museum. So this is a year-long initiative that our, our board and our staff is currently supporting, among many, many others. So this gives you an idea of some of the programs that we have, currently Resilient Roots coming up, but also Zines 101, which talks about how ideas spread in the pre-digital age, as well as a book signing for Images of America Kent with one of our volunteers who actually quite literally wrote the book on Kent. We also have several events coming up, which we would love to see you at. We will be at Cornucopia Days, of course, with our booth, per usual. Everyone is welcome at Experience Historical Kent. And our second annual HOPS Festival is coming up in September as well, and we would love to see you there. It will include historical demonstrations, modern craft breweries, a book signing, and also beer tasting, which is really ever a bad thing. We would love to see you all there. So to wrap things up, I am very excited and very looking forward to working with all of you, getting to know you, and working together to transform this place into a museum that represents the true vibrancy of the Kent community. I want to ensure, and our board wants to ensure, that these histories are preserved long into the future, long after we are gone. And I believe that by working with the city, organizations in Kent, some of you might be watching tonight or in the room with Kent residents, we can make that mission and vision happen. We're really committed to making the museum a hub of learning and cultural exchange, as well as a beacon to other museums who are interested in doing this kind of community-focused work. I'm so eager to meet all of you, get to know you, and to tell your stories at the Kent Historical Museum. And of course, a special thank you to Mayor Ralph, the Kent City Council, Kent City Parks and Recreation, and the Greater Kent Community for welcoming me, welcoming me into your community, to my new home with open arms. Thank you.
Thank you, Vijay. Any comments? Councilmember voice.
Thank you, Madam President. Great job, thank you, we're glad to have you. I was wondering, your board member that are here, did such hard work behind the scene, maybe we want to take a moment and have him introduce himself?
Absolutely. So I'm joined here tonight by many members of the board. I'm joined by the president of the board, he actually came on as president around the same time as I came on as executive director, so David Johnson. Our vice president, seated beside Dave, Eileen Lamphier, Yamada Lamphier. Our treasurer, Michael Johnson. Our secretary, Jim Bourne. And our accessibility and disability rights advocate, Alida Bourne.
That's awesome, thank you for all you do, right? Good job introducing me, just kidding, you still know their names, that's great. That's awesome, but hey, thank the board member for all you do, great job, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
And Councilmember voice, Councilwoman Michelle.
Thank you, Madam President. Vijay, it's nice to see you again, and I want to give a big kudos to the board. This past year, you, I have been to the museum more than I have ever been, and it's because you have, you know, changed, changed how it works. There's more events that I'm excited about. So yeah, great job on the strategic plan, and I know you have some assistance, a little bit, from our parks director as well, so kudos to all of you. It's, I can see the difference, for sure, so great work.
Thank you. Councilmember Frencher?
Thank you, I wanted to, I just have a thank you for you guys also. Encourage people that if you haven't gone, that it is a fun place to go. It's beautiful, for one, the inside and the outside. And I just want to thank you for also the engagement that you did, for putting out the surveys, and for asking the community, what do you want here? So I admire that you guys did that, thank you very much, and well done.
And I would also like to note, I forgot to mention, that we are looking into hiring a part-time education and program coordinator in order to support our capacity building at the museum, which is very exciting. Some more programs for people of all ages, including the youngest members of our community and city council, or everybody is welcome, and we hope to have curriculum and programs for everybody in place soon.
Thank you, and I, I want to say thank you. I've seen, as Councilwoman Michelle mentioned, I have seen the difference, and I know Eileen and rest of the board has put in a lot of work engaging all ages, so thank you. And we're looking forward to what you can bring, and looking forward to learning more about you. I did attend a HOPS Festival last year, and it was great learning, and so I, I'm looking forward to it being bigger and better maybe this year, so. And I will invite our community, if you haven't been to the Brighter House, please visit, it's a beautiful little gem in our community with a lot of history, and a lot of space that it seems to be changing with our new population, so I appreciate all the work that you are doing, and thank you so much for coming down here at City Council.
Thank you for inviting us.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you, Vijay, and we'll move on to our next item. Tony Donati is here with King County Long-Term Waste Disposal Options.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmembers, I'm back. This afternoon, we're joined by two employees from the King County Solid Waste Division, Brian Halverson, and then he's a strategic planning manager, and then Chris Stubbs, who I believe is with us, joining us virtually, he's the deputy director of the Solid Waste Division. Brian and Chris are here to brief us on King County's long-term disposal study. The last remaining landfill, as we know, is filling up and could fill as soon as 2040. This is the Cedar Hills Regional Landfill in Maple Valley. This study is an in-depth analysis of future waste disposal options for King County once the landfill closes. The purpose of the study is to help inform decision-making for the county and ILA partners, such as us here in Kent. Brian and Chris will share a couple of options on how our garbage may be disposed after 2040. A final decision on the preferred disposal method will be made after the issuance of a final environmental impact statement, currently scheduled for 2026. In the meantime, cities and advisory committees will have multiple opportunities to provide input and make a formal recommendation through the Metropolitan Solid Waste Advisory Committee, which I'm a member, so. All right, with that, I will introduce Chris and Brian to come up to give their presentation, and you can ask questions of them after. All right, council, thank you so much for having me today. Let's see here if I'm pushing the right button, there we go. So here you can see the vision of the King County Solid Waste Division. We're a division of the Department of Natural Resources and Parks at King County, and our vision is to achieve zero waste of resources and enhancing, through enhancing the envi- and enhancing the environment through collaboration and innovation. There are 37 cities, including Kent, which make up our service area, that's all of the cities in King County with the exception of Seattle and Milton. And you can see on the map here that we have eight transfer stations, two rural drop boxes, nine closed landfills, those are the sort of orange triangles you can see there, and one currently operating landfill, which is the Cedar Hills Regional Landfill. Whoops, I think I went backwards. There we go. So today's agenda will talk about the, the study, the purpose of the study, and some background behind it. We'll give an overview of the study and the engagement that we've had on it to date. We'll talk about the criteria that were analyzed, as well as the key results, and what the next steps are in the process of deciding what the, what the, what the next disposal method will be after the landfill closes. So the purpose of the long-term disposal study, as Tony mentioned, is So the purpose of the long-term disposal study, as Tony mentioned, is to find out, what are we going to do with, how are we going to manage King County's waste after the Cedar Hills Regional Landfill, which is the only active landfill in the county for receiving MSW, which is expected to close around 2040? It's looking at a couple of different options here. So we have, we use three different waste amounts, right? We said, well, we're not exactly sure how our replus program and other diversion and waste reduction programs are going to work in the future, so we looked at three different scenarios, including sort of a high level, a medium level, and a low level of tonnage in the future. And essentially to help us plan from, the study period is from 2040 to 2060. Engagement so far, we've had several different updates to our two advisory committees, the MIZWAC and SWAC, that's the Metropolitan Solid Waste Advisory Council, which is cities, which is the one that Tony's on, and the SWAC, which is the Solid Waste Advisory Council. And that's sort of a mix of different groups. There's residents near the landfill, there's haulers, industry folks, labor unions, a variety of different folks on that group. We've had a couple of open houses, we've had five subgroup meetings, so we convened sort of a subset of the MIZWAC group with specific folks who asked to really dive into the weeds and see some of the preliminary drafts of the study and provide input on that. You can see here in the subbullets, overview, refuse to drive fuel and whatnot, these were the topics of those meetings. We also presented to Sound Cities Association and a couple of other regional committee, and held a couple of other regional committee briefings. So beyond the scope of the study, right, so there's things that we could include in the study and things we couldn't. Hyper-local impacts of the options isn't included in here. A lot of that will be done through the SEPA analysis, right, the environmental impact statement, that's the, where we'll look at, really like, what are the impacts that are very specific to local areas? Some of those won't, we won't be able to look into everything. For example, we won't be able to look at social impacts for specific neighborhoods because there's no siting study here, we haven't, we haven't chosen a location, we haven't even chosen a method of disposal yet. But once we do, if we are going to build a facility, we would do that kind of analysis during the siting process. How replus will look, right? So we didn't, we don't discuss like, or you know, it's not about studying, how much material are we going to be able to divert between now and 2040, and then from 2040 to 2060? It's looking at, what do we do with the waste that we will have? And that's why we use three different tonnage scenarios when we consider that. Rate impacts, so we do look at capital and operating costs, and we look at a cost, and we sort of boil those down, or I should say, the consultant boils those down into a cost per ton to help compare the different, you know, sort of compare the different costs associated with each of the options. But because it's so far in the future, rate impacts would just, you know, it's not really feasible to do a rate impact study at that, at this point. Cost benefit analysis of combining different disposal methods, this is, isn't, it sort of isn't, isn't looked at in the study, right? So technically, it's not, and you'll see, you know, as we go through, why that's, why that's the case. It's largely because many of the options were deemed sort of infeasible to move forward as a potential option, and so we couldn't really combine them. However, one of them, mass burn or waste to energy, we are calling waste to energy, or excuse me, we're calling mass burn with waste export by rail, because there's still a significant amount of ash that would need to be exported after it's treated at the mass burn facility. So it's, that is essentially a combination of two options. And then partial early export, the study really is about, what do we do after the landfill is closed to manage the waste that comes into King County transfer stations, not about extending the life of the landfill? We did look at this in the past, and it was deemed that essentially partial early export was, was too expensive because we are essentially running two different disposal options at the same time, so it just really increases the cost. So these are the five different options that we looked at. The first is waste export by rail, sometimes we call it Weber. And this entails using an existing intermodal facility, right? So basically, we put these shipping containers, kind of, on the back of our transfer trailers, take it to one of these intermodal facilities where it's picked up off the back of the truck and put into the wheel well of a railcar, and they're stacked usually double, too high. And then those are exported down the Columbia River Gorge to one, one or more of three existing landfills in southeastern Washington and northeastern Oregon. Let's see here. And then mass burn, this consists of building a facility where we bring the waste, there's a little bit of sorting and stuff that happens, or it's burned essentially to create electricity, and then there's some sorting, like, they'll pull the metal out afterwards, and then the ash is then taken, again, it's exported by rail, again, to a monofil, which is a sort of a special landfill for specific types of special waste. Gasification and pyrolysis, these are two other thermal treatments, they call them thermal treatments. It's basically, it's not technically burning the waste, but it's heating, it's superheating it and producing things like synthetic gas and oil and other things like that out of it, as well as other byproducts. And then refuse to drive fuel, isn't so much a disposal method as it is sort of a mechanical sortation and transformation process. Basically, what they do is, is they mix and dry the waste, they turn it into like pellets or fluff, and then that's then used by places like cement kilns as a replacement coal to heat their boilers. So yeah, it's turning the waste into a fuel that can be burned in replacement of coal. Of those five, only waste export by rail and mass burn with waste export are considered feasible moving forward, and I'll talk a little bit more about why that is a little bit later here in the presentation. So the study criteria, we looked at five options across three different tonnage scenarios, and I should mention that the three tonnage scenarios not only differed in the amount of tonnage, but in the composition of the material in the waste stream, right? So we assumed different things about how effective replus was, for example, and certain things that we already have in replus, like organics diversion bills and things like that. So the middle scenario has less organic waste in it as proportion of all waste than the high-tonnage scenario does, for example. But the six criteria we looked at, these are sort of like the larger criteria, really there's a bunch of subcriteria inside of each of these as well, and they kind of answer the questions you see here, economic impact, how expensive is it to implement? Environmental impact, you know, what are the impacts to the climate, water, air, human health, things of that nature? Social impact, what are the impacts to local neighborhoods? And as I mentioned before, we're not looking here at the hyper-local stuff, but we are, we are able to say, you know, here's the sort of the number of jobs that are created, the type of jobs, as well as, you know, sort of noise and traffic impacts that would happen regardless of where you put it, right? Since there's no siting, there's no specific site locator in the study. Capacity, how does each method handle the different waste tonnage types? Does it have, you know, can it handle the different composition of material, and can it handle the volume of material that's coming through? Logistics, how does it fit into our existing King County transfer system? And then operating history, what's the store record of performance, right? Are these tried and true? Have they been used in other places in the U.S. successfully? What's their, you know, how safe are they, things of that nature? So key takeaways, starting with refuse to drive fuel and gasification and pyrolysis, these are the three that were, they were eliminated from consideration for the final decision. However, what's been researched is in the report, so everything, all the information that was gathered and all the analysis is included in the report. Refuse to drive fuel is technically capable of processing the amount of material, and just to give you a sense of scale, right? The three scenarios are a million tons, just over a million tons per year, about 667,000 tons, and 330,000 tons in 2040. Those are sort of the three levels. And to give you just sort of a touch point, last year in 2024, the King County system disposed of 840, about 840,000 tons of solid waste, so in between the high and the medium scenario. So it is technically capable of handling that. The material, though, that's in MSW, right, it's a mix of different things, right? All the different things we throw in our trashcans and what have you, and they have different sort of energy density, right? So wood or plastic has more energy density, you know, you can burn it and get more energy out of it than you can from glass or brick or tile or something like that. There's also a problem with the material, once it's used, when they put it in the boilers, especially because there's a high organic content or a lot of food waste in there, that salt creates these sort of dried chlorides and stuff, and it can really sort of muck up their machinery a little bit, and so they don't love using it. And then finally, there's really no guarantee for markets for this material after we've spent a lot of money sort of turning it into this fuel, we still have to sell it, and if we can't find markets for it, we still have to landfill it at the end of the day, or send it to mass burn, for example. So that's one of the reasons, or those are the reasons that those were, that was eliminated from contention to move forward. Gasification and pyrolysis, there's a couple of issues here. One is also the, the real hetero, sort of, the mixture of lots of different stuff in the MSW, right? These work better, these technologies work better when you have a sort of a clean, homogeneous stream of sort of just one kind of plastic or a couple of kinds of plastic, for example, as opposed to, you know, mixing it in with food waste and things like that, which is what our MSW looks like. Most existing facilities are really small and can only handle, I think the largest one we, the consultants were able to find processed about 30,000 tons of MSW, and they've actually, I think, recently closed because they weren't able to make it work either. It's just, it's kind of an unproven technology at the scales and the mixtures of MSW that we're looking at. So they wouldn't, so 30,000, that's one-tenth of even the lowest scenario that we looked at. And then I just want, so that's why those two were eliminated from further consideration. I will say that we will continue to look at these and keep our eye on them as they, as we move forward to see if some breakthroughs are made, and we may reconsider at that point. But for now, they don't, they don't look like they'll be able to meet our needs. We brought this information, or the consultants brought this information to our advisory groups, and they agreed that these should be removed from consideration, although, again, we'll keep that, or that information is still in the report. So here are the key takeaways for the two that have moved toward. The capital cost for mass burn with Weber is about $1.2 billion for the facility. The operational costs are about $75 million a year, which brings the cost per ton in 2040 dollars up to about $230 per ton. These are really difficult to cite and permit, as you can imagine, folks don't usually want a waste incinerator in their backyard. The life cycle analysis, so what we did basically for the, or what the consultant did again, for the environmental factors is do a life cycle analysis and said, all right, here are the impacts of transporting the waste, all the transportation that's involved, the processing that's involved, so that's either landfilling or waste incineration, and the offsets, right? So if you were a landfill and you're making energy off of the landfill gas, or if you're making electricity from burning the waste, that is offsetting other forms of energy, and so that's why you'll see, right? So you're not burning as much coal, for example, if you're generating the equivalent amount of electricity, burning garbage instead, right? And so that's, that's what the LCA is doing here. For mass burn, it shows benefits for nonrenewable energy, right? So it's replacing other forms of nonrenewable energy. It shows a benefit for acidification and for smog formation. The LCA does show a detriment for global warming, water consumption, and cancer potential. And there are tables in the study itself that compares all the different options side by side, so you can kind of see how they stack up. Still on mass burn, it does create a sort of financial disincentive to recycle, that doesn't mean that it would reduce recycling necessarily, but because it's so expensive, the idea is that the more tonnage you can push through it, the less expensive it is per ton that's processed, right? So it does, it does create a financial disincentive, even if it doesn't necessarily mean that it would reduce recycling. Again, it reduces waste by weight by about 75%, and then the remainder of that 25% is ash that needs to be exported to a monofil. There have been some recent closures, so the two remaining waste incinerators in California have shut down recently, as well as the only one in Oregon. So on the West Coast, the only remaining operating mass burn facility is in Spokane right now. And then one more thing to mention, because of the Clean Energy Transformation Act, or CETA, here in Washington, MSW is specifically called out as not being a renewable resource, meaning that energy created by burning it wouldn't be able to be sold retail locally. Federal law still requires the local, excuse me, the local utilities to purchase the electricity, but then they'd have to set up agreements with, you know, other cities or other states and, you know, maybe Canada or something like that, and there's a lot of costs associated with that. So it reduces the economic value of the energy that's generated through mass burn.
Brian, there's a couple of questions. I have one about the closures of the facilities, were they due to regulations, or neighbors, or just not enough?
So I don't think we have anything specific from them, but I do know that California has passed some rules about the financial incentives, I think. Let me pull this out here. I've got some notes about that. And then Oregon, I think, was about the emissions. They have new emissions guidelines that, that may have made it more expensive to operate. Again, I'm not sure, I can't say for sure that that's why they closed down, but those are some of the stressors that were put that are recent here. Let's see here.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher.
I have the same question. Thank you.
Stricter emissions in Oregon and in California, legislation that removed incentives for directing solid waste to incinerators are what we could find out in terms of.
Thank you.
So waste export by rail, capital cost is 3.3 million, and that's mostly having to buy these new chassis, right? Instead of using the transfer trailers that we have right now, we'd buy just the chassis, and then we rent the, we essentially rent the shipping containers that go on top. Operating cost, about 72 million a year, which brings the total cost to about $108 per ton in 2040 dollars compared to the 230 per ton for, for mass burn with Weber. You can utilize existing infrastructure, right? So there are two intermodal facilities here that we can already use. The LCA, that shows for the environmental factors, shows a benefit in water consumption, and it's neutral when it comes to cancer potential. You can more, as you can imagine, you can more easily attenuate the level of service to how much tonnage is coming in, right? Less tonnage, we just send fewer railcars down, so, and we pay less, right? Because those are usually structured as a per-ton fee in the contract. And then Washington State Rail, our consultants, had a subconsultant that worked, spoke with the railroads and the landfills, and they found that through the study period, they didn't expect any significant impacts to rail traffic by adding King County to the export system, and, but they did mention that the railroad, so the landfills typically want long contracts, right, to guarantee, sort of lock in a lower price for folks and guarantee that revenue and tonnage. It's a little bit different with the railroads, though, they actually prefer slightly shorter contracts, and since we would need to rail it to these facilities, that is something that the consultant wanted to point out as a potential financial risk. It could increase the cost, or, you know, if there are significant changes to costs across the shorter timelines. Finally, next steps, Tony talked about a few of these. The SEPA process has begun. This is the State Environmental Protection Act, and we're doing the environmental impact statement. We're doing, we've already started doing, I think the first scoping meeting is, public meeting is tonight. There's one here in Kent at the Commons Community Center, I believe, and it is next Wednesday at, I want to say it's at 6 o'clock here in Kent, and there are a few others. I think there are five total meetings, four in person and one virtual, so there'll be opportunities there. Once, and that's just scoping, so that's saying like, all right, what are all the things that we want to study in this environmental impact statement? Then there'll be a draft environmental impact statement, and that'll be another opportunity for the community. We'll still, we'll have another five public meetings for folks to come and provide input. We're doing the city briefings right now, Q2 2025. Regular EIS updates to the advisory committees, so we meet with them every month, and we provide an update on that every month. And then the final EIS we're looking for at the end of 2026, after which, that's the point at which we'll ask Tony and the other folks on the advisory committees, all right, what is your decision about what to propose to the council, and that should go forward in Q2 of 2027. And then that comp plan will come to the cities for adoption as well. I believe that is my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you, Brian. Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Brian. I know you presented to the CCA. I didn't ask this question last now. Are there any other states, country doing this type of mass burning that you're aware of?
I think Florida has quite a few. There are, there are other facilities in the United States. I know Florida has some. I know there's also some that ban it, so there's sort of a mixed bag.
So there's some lesson learned out there that you guys can get, lesson learned from some of the other places that implement this mass burning?
Right. I think, I mean, a lot of that is in the sort of the safety, you know, the safety history and that, I think, is one of the criteria here that we looked at, whoops, under operating history, right? So there's a lot of information about that in the study, which is online. There's also an FAQ online as well.
Thank you, sir.
I'm happy to answer any questions if you want to funnel those through Tony to us. Happy to answer those there, too, if you come up with any later.
Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. You know, been looking at this problem for a long time, is what to do for the landfill. And you had the public come input from before, and then you went back and looked at cost and all the other factors that you mentioned. Just straight from the public comment and from listening to the cities previously, what was the ranking at that point?
So if they did a ranking before, I joined the county in 2020, and I know that in the 2019 comp plan, they did look at mass burn, waste export, and extending the life of the landfill is three different options. And they decided to go with extending the life of the landfill. So that's why we're building Area 9 out there. That'll be the last area of the landfill, though, and that extended the life of the landfill to about 2040. But we have not asked for a ranking from folks yet. There's still more information to be learned through the EIS process, but we will ask for recommendations after that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Boyd.
Yes, I have a question. I see to hear that the state is doing the studies on it, the SEPA. And my question is, is the federal government, are they also doing a study on this?
I can't speak to that. I'm not sure if they're doing a study on, on, on long-term disposal methods. Certainly, they wouldn't be doing one that's as specific as ours is to our region. And the SEPA, so it's, it's the State Environmental Protection Act, but we're actually doing the study, well, we've hired a consultant to do the study, and we'll be doing it very specifically on our region and in King County. So happy to go and look and see if there's anything like that, maybe in the EPA or something like that, and provide any follow-up.
Yeah, the NEPA, N-E-P-A, yes. Okay, I was just curious. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you so much, Brian. Thank you for taking the time to come in, to share this information with us, and we look forward to participating in the process, and hopefully our community will be engaged as well. So, and at that, any other questions or comments? All right, we are adjourned until seven o'clock for council meeting. Thank you so much.